Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start our meeting. Today is February ninth, and this is an electronically held meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, council members, just a reminder to state the city township or county and the state in which you're currently located. And I'm going to start with Dave Abdullah.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Dearborn Heights. Wayne County, Michigan.
Mo Baydun.
I am here in Playa Muñez, Mexico. For the record, I am in Mexico and I did not plan this to be live. Had I known this, I was getting appointed, I would have never booked this three months ago. So all the residents forgive me on this, but I'm here.
You're here.
We would all trade with you, so don't worry.
Yes.
It is ninety-three. Yes.
Robert Coniston.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malonowski Maxwell.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Ray Muscat.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here, in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a call. Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um. Next, we have the agenda approval. Before we do that, I'd like to make a I'd like to make a statement. On item three dash one, we do have a closed study session. Councilman Coniston and I both discussed it, and we will be recusing ourselves from that meeting because of a possible conflict of interest. So we will be with you during the closed session, and at this time, I have agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the order of business for the February ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Madam Chair. Excuse me. Oh, no, no, no. Councilman Coniston has been recognized, and you could be second. Go ahead, Councilman Coniston.
Electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council virtual meeting be approved?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdelhak.
Okay, we did send you city of Dearborn Heights a new mayor appointee position. And it is proposed by Ray Muscat, myself, and Tom Wenzel.
Correct.
And it's not on the agenda. I would like to see if we can add it as three. Uh, someplace in three.
Okay, Councilman Abdelhak, I know we discussed this last Monday, and I also sent Councilman Muscat an email. It will be on the next agenda. That's where it will be. At this time, it's not necessary to walk it on because it's not an urgency that can't wait two more weeks. But I'd be more than happy to put it on that agenda.
Okay. The reason I'm asking because we all, we all have been asking for grant writer for, uh, you know, uh, compliance and for negotiator for contracts, because we have contracts coming up for negotiation. And they cost the city millions of dollars because of the person who negotiated the previously. Basically, in my opinion, didn't know what they have been doing. And this is an urgent matter.
Okay, this time.
If the city council wants to put it next, uh, two weeks, that's fine with me.
No, it will be on there in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion in regards to the agenda approval? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Right now, I'm going to hand off my host to George because we are going to move to go into a closed study session.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I think we need to have a motion, and I'm willing to do that.
What, please?
Uh, I move that city council, uh, move to a closed session at seven twenty PM to discuss a lawsuit as, as outlined uh, for our closed session today.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? At this time, I will ask council members to leave to go into the closed study session.
Madam, Madam Chair, we need a roll call vote for a closed session, and I just want to make sure that somebody will be there, yes, uh, taking minutes.
Uh, when you get in that session, please someone decide to take the minutes. At this time, Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Coniston.
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
Yes.
Councilman Baydun.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes.
Councilman Abdelhak.
Yes.
Malonowski Maxwell, yes. At this time, we will move to go into a closed study session. Except for me and Councilman Coniston, we'll stay here and entertain you.
Is we're gonna be eliminated?
I know Tom's jealous. I mean, Councilman Wenzel's jealous. What was that?
All right, so those five council members are now in closed session. Was there any other person I needed to add, Council Chair?
Uh, Sue, um, Bartos is supposed to be in there.
Okay.
And they do have to make sure that they're taking notes. The last one for the close session and return them into the clerk's office. Oh, because Mo took them. He's got them.
That was Sue Bartos?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't see her here. Is she, you know, a lot of people had trouble. Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? Mayor Bazey needs to go in.
Okay.
Believe, um, Mariana does too, as she was on the agenda. Okay. Does, uh, does HR Director?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Right, is that all?
I think that's it. Do I hand over hosts back to me?
Or?
Okay, and at this time, I'm going to pause the recording. Oh, you know, I can't. I don't have that.
Are we recording again?
Okay, recording is resumed. Go ahead, please.
Council Chair, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council return to an open session at eight oh one.
Support.
Support by Councilman Zuhair Abdelhak. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are back in session. Um, Madam Clerk, do we need to take a roll call on that?
No.
Okay.
Not on the return.
Okay, just chuck it. Okay, next, we have approval of the minutes. This is minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the electronically held regular meeting of January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, as outlined in four A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdelhak. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the electronically held special meeting of January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the minutes of the electronically held special meeting of January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one be approved?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearings and comments on agenda items. These are agenda items only, and you have two minutes. Please state your name, city, county. Anyone? I'm not seeing anything. Get this time. Okay, at this time, we will move on. Next, we have public funds and I'm sorry, fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve current claim six one through six twenty-one as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have consideration of bids. This is DPW Director Salmy bid award for replacement of City Hall rooftop unit.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we concur with Director of Public Works John Salmy, requesting approval to replace a failed rooftop unit, RTU at City Hall, and received two quotes and award there will award this to Johnson Controls in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty-seven as they have provided the lowest quote, and he authorizes additionally for us to authorize the mayor and city clerk sign the agreement and authorize payment after successful installation and startup as outlined in item seven A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under reports from mayor, we have corporation counsel appointment confirmation.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayor all your appointment of Mr. Gary Miyaki as corporation counsel pursuant to section five point one three A and sections five point one five of the city charter charter with the term to expire January second, two thousand twenty-two, as outlined in eight A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdelhak. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I, I, I'm gonna talk about the elephant in the room. Um. In, in this particular case, obviously, for the last two, three, four, five years, uh, we brought it up multiple times about possible consideration of other attorneys. Um, I, for one, I can tell you, you know, personally, I've, uh, had a good working relationship with our attorney or, or maybe not in official capacity right now as we speak, but the attorney, uh, Gary Miyaki, I think he's done a pretty good job, as I mentioned in previous meetings. Um, as a prosecutor in the court system, I've asked. Um, and again, I've, I've been told that he's done a good job there, and they're very comfortable with him. But at the same time, I think it has to be in discussion at this particular point, the fact that for multiple years, there's been a lot of requests from different council members uh, of possible changes or, or other options. And I, for one, have always been of the opinion, and will still and am still of the opinion today, that A, Gary Miyaki, B, one of the people that would be considered, and he'd be one of the favorites I would very seriously consider. But at the same time, I'd like to see what other options we have available to us. In addition to that, I don't know if it's the right thing to do, especially if we're going to pursue that particular direction to completely appoint this up to the year two thousand and twenty-two. Um, if we are going to go in a direction of talking to possible other firms, then at this particular point, what I would suggest is maybe we appoint, uh, Gary Miyaki up to maybe June and then decide where we go from there. And this would be included in the item, if you recall, that we received, and it's public knowledge now. Uh, paper here, uh, the agreement that he had sent us. Um, and that one said through June also, this is, I'm talking about, I don't even, I'm trying to pull it up. Uh, the maintenance of services agreement on eight B. And that one did say through, uh, that was June off the top of my head. So I, I just wanted to open that up for discussion because we need to discuss it. Now, for all I'm bored with going with Gary Miyaki, who again, I would say has done a pretty good job, then, then that's what it is. But again, in multiple, multiple past meetings, there was talk about different council members to get somebody else as a possibility.
Council Chair.
Muscat.
Uh, you know, and, and I agree with Councilman, uh, Dave Abdullah about, you know, I was one being wanting to see our, our other options, but at the present time, with everything being new, the council chair, uh, with, with, uh, a new mayor, two new, uh, appointees on, on, uh, on the city council, that the new mayor have somebody that's familiar with the city through at least the election. Uh, and then after, uh, the election, whoever may be fortunate enough to win can then, uh, submit names at that time in January. That's why I believe that this motion, uh, to go through two twenty, January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one with, or excuse me, to, uh, uh, twenty twenty-one would be, um, would be a good idea. Uh, so, you know, January twenty-eighth.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-one, uh, or Jan, whatever the date is in January or November, uh, would be good for me because of familiarity. Um, you know, it's going to expire on January second, excuse me, twenty twenty-two as outlined in eight A. So that would be good. It would give the, the, the mayor and the council somebody that's familiar with the city up until the election. So that's what I, 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 I want to stick with the same motion if possible.
Council Chair.
Man Abdelhak.
So I, I, I was looking under eight. I, I pulled up the maintenance, maintenance of services agreement, and on number seven of that agreement says, this agreement shall remain in effect until the council confirms slash approves the appointment of a corporation counsel or until June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So that's the date that was coming up with at the time. So if we approve a new corporation counsel, that would not apply. But if we didn't, I'm just saying, in that agreement, it had set through June thirtieth. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on the date. Thank you.
Can we?
We have a motion on the table.
He's accepting that.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, and it was, um, nine A.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdelhak.
Uh, I do agree with Councilman Dave Abdullah. We all wanted, uh, a new, at least a, a group of names to come in in front of the city council to select one uh, was agreement, uh, was the mayor. And, uh, I would like really to see if we can make it to June thirtieth. And maybe at that time, the mayor can bring names, including Mr. Miyaki. Especially now, the mayor needs somebody who is familiar with the city. But at the same time, I want to give the city council a chance that if we're not happy with the services or there is some, something better to have a choice, uh, you know, as, as early as June thirtieth.
Madam Chair. I, I, I agree with I agree with, uh, Councilman Abdul Haak and Councilman Abdelhak on that as well. Um, I think it's important that we, you know, we move, you know, immediately with having a corporate counsel. Uh, we haven't had a corporate counsel for a pretty long time. Uh, so I, I mean, I think we do need to move forward with that motion, but I also think that we have to put it to the dates, I think, that Councilman Abdelhak and Councilman Abdelhak also stated, so that we can have other bids, we can see other people. I mean, who knows? Miyaki could be the best person on there, and, and we still move forward with them.
Absolutely.
Mayor's raising his hand.
But, but, but I think the most important, uh, Madam Chair, is that we have a corporate counsel.
That Councilman Muscat raising his hand. Go ahead, please.
You know, we gotta, we can't forget that we've got an election coming up in November, folks. And if we, we, we start doing this in June and then pick somebody else in, in June to have July, August, it doesn't make any sense. You put it through the election cycle, and whoever gets elected as mayor, we may have the same mayor, we may have a different mayor. Let that person then bring the names forward to city council for approval. That, it, it, it doesn't get any easier than that, okay? Uh, we, we, do we really want to switch in the middle of the ballgame here? And, and that really hurts the administration more than it hurts anybody else. Uh, there's no consistency there. So that's the point that I want to try to make, and, you know, November's right around the corner. It's really not that far away if you, you want to look at it. Uh, so, you know, keep that well, you know, keep in the back of your head that it just doesn't make sense.
Okay, we've got, um, Councilman Abdelhak, and then Gary Miyaki, and then mayor. Go ahead, Councilman Abdelhak.
That's where I was gonna go with this, basically, you just mentioned, but I, I just want to make it clear. Again, I had no, personally, I had no problem with, uh, giving Miyaki. But I was gonna ask, and I, since you've called on the mayor, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, please address this. What is your thought process behind, um, asking for Gary Miyaki to continue through, basically through the rest of the year, through the rest of this year? And also know whoever the mayor happens to be elected, whether it's you or somebody else, depends on who ends up being, would take over in January. But can you fill me in as to why you feel Gary Miyaki would be the right person for the job at this point? And also, again, as you know, I'm very direct. I don't mince any words. At one point, you were not in favor of him. So with that being the case, why would you be in favor of now? And I'm not saying that in a, uh, in a disrespectful way. I just want to see where the thought process is changing. Thank you.
Um, thank, thank you, Councilman, uh, Council for Tom Abdelhak. Uh, so, uh, for the last week or so, you know, we've had, you know, several meetings over here, and there's, there's a lot of issues and concerns that have been coming through the city. And, uh, Mr. Miyaki has been actually, uh, even though he wasn't paid, you know, before, before today, before he was approved, uh, for his fees to be paid, he's been volunteering his time and still committed to the city, trying to represent us. And, you know, especially right now, with the, with the pandemic, you know, with the recent passing with a longstanding mayor, uh, you know, we urgently need an attorney, especially some, you know, an attorney that, you know, he knows about the current city matters. And also, uh, you know, with, without, you know, delaying anything. I mean, just like today, there's stuff that came up. And Mr. Miyaki, you know, he had knowledge of some of the things that came, uh, was like, I, I can't discuss it, but it was, uh, some court documents that needed urgent matters like, like yesterday. And, um, he, he, he was willing to take on the paperwork and go file with the court. So he's, he's, he's been, since I've been here, I mean, for the last week or so, he's been very, very helpful. He's been, uh, he, you know, anytime we call him, you know, he's, he's always for the city. You know, always trying to represent the city well as a resident himself. So, and the reason why, you know, I put down January second, twenty twenty-two, as, you know, a few council members mentioned, is, you know, whoever gets, uh, elected in, uh, in November, then that person, you know, gets to choose, you know, they can bring somebody forward. Or, you know, they can send it out for bed, and they can put Mr. Miyaki in, you know, in the mix as well to see who's best fit, you know, especially, you know, if it was the best, uh, not just fit, but also, uh, with, you know, cost-wise. So that's, that's why I put that down so far. I don't, I don't think as of right now, you know, mid-year, so you would have less than, so if we say June, then you only have few months to bring somebody on board. So that somebody who comes on board has a lot of work to do before the end of the year. So whoever gets elected at the end of the year, then they have to bring another council, maybe. So right now, I think we should, I mean, in my opinion, that's why I put January second. So whoever gets elected, you know, can come back and say, okay, let's put it out for bed. That's one of the reasons why I put that. So we don't put our city in jeopardy and cause more, you know, more chaos. And, you know, we want to try to, you know, as we discussed earlier, you know, stability. We need to move our city forward. And right now, Mr. Miyaki is well aware of all the things that are going on in the city. And, you know, he's, he's been, like I said, he's been helping us. And, you know, without even risking that he's not going to get paid, he's still stepping forward and helping us right now. And I've seen, I've seen that since, you know, since I was appointed, you know, some of the work he's been doing. And, you know, it's just unselfishness, you know, with him just like being for us. And a lot of, you know, uh, city administrators been calling him about different matters.
Okay, but Mr. Mayor, um, and, and I agree with all the statements you've just made there. Uh, clearly, he's, he does a good job. He has good commitment. As you know, as you've just said, mentioned, we didn't have a, a contract with him yet. He continued to work, and I respect him for that, you know, and his commitment. That, that's very respectful. But I just want to, again, I want to talk about the elephant in the room, and, and I think it has to be addressed because you, at one point, not trying to put you on the spot, honestly. But at one point, you were not in favor of Gary Miyaki. And you don't have to get into the, the details, but I just want to make sure, have those been put to bed, where your com, those things that were concerning you at one point, are they no longer an issue for you at this point? Because that's something that's got to be addressed, obviously.
So, I mean, that's some of the, the discussions we had, you know, we had, uh, uh, after, a day after my appointment, you know, we had a, a meeting with everyone. Well, first, I met with Mr. Miyaki first on the first day of my appointment. And we talked about a lot of issues and a lot of my concerns, you know, when I was on the council. So a lot of these issues have been resolved, and, uh, you know, I, I got the commitment, and, you know, right, right, you know, right now, that every, everyone, including, you know, my department heads, everybody that, you know, that I talked to, that everybody's on board, you know, we gotta, we, we gotta run. Uh, I'm hoping, you know, that we can run a smoother or better council meetings, you know, uh, you know, with respect, and everybody respects one another, and just make sure that, you know, if any issues, any concerns that are brought forward, you know, are addressed. And that's some of the stuff that, you know, with, uh, Mr. Miyaki, you know, I, I brought up like some concerns, and, you know, I, I'm happy with the outcome, you know, all the the things that, you know, we had concerns with in the past, you know, those were in the past. And everybody wants to move forward. We, we want to make sure that we propel our city forward. We, we don't want any more, uh, you know, bickering, you know, anymore, any, any issues or anything like that. You know, my, my, my goal or my vision, my objective is to stop stuff right now, you know, the day I was appointed. And if there's any, any concerns that you guys have with anyone, you know, you come to me, and I will make sure I address it on the spot. And, you know, like I said, Mr. Miyaki has been more than helpful, and, you know, we, we got a chance to really, you know, talk about like the different things that we talked about, you know, all the issues that we had as council, you know, they've been addressed, and, you know, we, we can meet individually. You know, we can go through like the vision, so we, you know, so we're not violating the open meeting, you know, so we can talk, and I can share with each one. And I know, I know a few of the council members stopped in, in my office recently, and, you know, we talked, you know, and you guys seen the difference in the city, in the city hall. So again, that was one of the things that my biggest issue that we had in the past, especially me as counsel, is I want it soft to run smoothly. And I always wanted to move forward. And I just want to make sure that if any of the council members have issues with anybody, including our, you know, our city attorney, you know, to, to bring it forward, and I will guarantee you, it's going to get addressed, you know, that, that, that same day.
Okay, thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Abdelhak.
I am one person who watched Mr. Miyaki all these years. And sometimes I had disagreements with him, but, uh, for fairness, he never wrote an opinion or done anything which, in my opinion, he harmed the city in any way. Uh, but I am going to ask him, I looked at his expenses for the last six months. Uh, there is sixty-one thousand dollars, uh, he's asking us to, to pay. I would like, uh, ask, to ask him if he can knock down ten thousand dollars out of it. We would appreciate it very much.
Madam Chair. At this time, I, I have a list here, and I have Mr. Miyaki as next. Go ahead, please.
Okay, uh, thank you, Council Chair, and thank you, Mayor Bazey, uh, for your support, and, uh, Councilman Muscat and Mr. Councilman Abdelhak as well. I just wanted to note that, yes, I'm very pleased, uh, to be able to continue to serve if I'm, uh, appointed or my appointment is confirmed. Um, I think Mayor Bazey and I have worked very well together, and I look forward to continuing to be able to do so and help the city. And I would note, just as a practical matter, it would strike me as being very difficult at this time to end up changing things in terms of any sort of city attorney or corporation counsel. Um, most of the time, if a city is looking at changing, uh, the attorneys, they'll want to do so with a longer time period involved. And frankly, I don't know how many attorneys will come forward or will come forward with a proposal that uh, the city would like if we're looking at a time period of seven months, because that, I mean, essentially, we're talking about through November. And, um, it strikes me that And um it strikes me that uh that period uh is a very short period, is a potential period, certainly if Mayor Bazey is successful. Um then it could be a much longer period, but there's no uh guarantee for a firm that might be interested in the position. Um and you would potentially have proposals being made with the idea of we have no certainty or have people not making a proposal. So uh in my view, um that would be something that would be problematic for doing the processes suggested by uh Councilman Abdullah. And
Mr. Miyaki, um Councilman Abdallah asked you a question and you've not answered it. Councilman Abdallah, would you like to answer, would you like to state?
His question, sorry.
I'm sorry, I don't, I know he's not going to like me asking him to knock down ten thousand dollars of his uh fees. Because some of it, you know, really wasn't approved by the city council. And I really would appreciate it if you show little bit uh support to the city by knocking down the ten thousand dollars of the sixty one.
Well, Mr. Abdallah, I'm, I, I hate to say this, but the difficulty is, is that my bills have already been cut. And even with the maintenance of services agreement, uh essentially, they've been very cut back. So in all the work I did, I tried to end up being uh very circumspect uh with regard to that. So um I, I would not be inclined, I'm sorry, to cut ten thousand dollars off and find myself in a position where uh I would have a difficulty to do, you know, being able to cover my own bills with regard to that. Going six months without getting paid is quite the sacrifice. And um, you know, no interest being charged or anything else. Uh it's not been an easy time to deal with not getting paid for six months, so.
I, I do understand that, but for the sake to start afresh and goodwill, I will ask you again if you can knock it down, if it is possible, we thank you very much for it.
Um I guess what I would say is that maybe we would be looking at the next item, the maintenance of service agreement. And maybe if we were looking at reducing that by a bit, then I might be looking at that, but not, not the sixty one thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have um an iPhone here, I'm going to unmute you, I'm not sure what you would have to add to this, I'm gonna ask if it's a public comment that we will be muting you again, hold on a minute, go ahead, please.
Sam Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Okay, Sam, this is not the point, sorry.
I already had my.
I'm really sorry, this is not the appropriate time to be speaking. Okay, um, any further discussion? Okay, Councilman Abdullah had his hand up first.
No, I'm, I'm also.
Councilman Conston.
I just want to mention, I believe as far as the amount, amounts of the attorney fees and arrears, those were part of a accord and satisfaction, part of a discussion and settlement, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, at this time, we do have something on the table, do we have any further discussion before we vote on it?
You know, Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydum.
Uh you know, thinking about it and, you know, with what Mayor Bazey had said, to be logical, putting, you know, our corporate council there for six months and then getting rid of them, looking for bids, trying to reappoint, going back, going forth. If we're, you know, we're gonna approve of this, I say we prove them over to November, the new mayor or if it's still Mayor Bazey, you continue on it and and everybody moves forward. But I mean, if we're gonna prove them, I think it's silly and to to say we're just gonna do it for six months and then we're gonna, you know, come back and look for somebody else. Who knows, by then we, maybe we don't find anybody and and I think it's gonna be real hard to try to find another corporate council that's gonna come in and say, hey, you know, work for us for five months. You don't know much, but you might not be here if there's a new mayor or a new council. So I think being that there's gonna be five seats up, you know, come November and, you know, the mayor's seat, you, you give, you know, our, our Miyaki to be able to just finish us off till November or till January. And uh we vote on it again then and have the new council. What do you do that?
Okay, we do have a motion on the table, either we need to amend it or vote on it and then bring back the motion with what you're suggesting.
Vote on it.
I, I agree, I think we just vote on this.
I agree.
Yeah, what, what exactly are we voting now? What's the dates now? So everybody's clear.
Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
It's for the appointment of uh Gary Miyati to be the uh corporation council till January second, twenty twenty two.
January twenty, so, okay.
That's the original motion that was under here.
Correct, and that, that takes them through the election cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Miyaki. Next, we have the maintenance of services agreement between Mr. Gary Miyaki and the City of Dearborn Heights.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Uh I make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the proposed maintenance of services agreement between Mr. Gary Miyati and the City of Dearborn Heights. In addition, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign an agreement on behalf of the city. The city shall pay Mr. Miyati the total of seventy five thousand dollars less current claim six twelve in the amount of sixty one thousand, seven hundred and twenty five for invoices previously submitted to the city as outlined in item eight B.
You have to have the adding of the mayor signing it and city clerk.
This is what they, this was the clerk's office uh added on there.
I support.
Everything included, yeah. Support by Councilman Muscat, is there a discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
Yeah, I would like to hear from Mr. Miyati, what is he going to reduce from this agreement?
Uh why don't we make it sixty seven, five?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Put that into what we have, go ahead. So you're amending it to sixty seven, five less the current claim six twelve, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you want me to repeat the motion or are you good?
Yes, go ahead, please, Councilman Abdullah.
Okay, so I make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the proposed maintenance of services agreement between Mr. Gary Miyati and the City of Dearborn Heights. In addition, authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. The city shall pay Mr. Miyati the total sum of sixty seven thousand, five hundred dollars less current claim six dash twelve in the amount of sixty one thousand, seven hundred and twenty five for invoices previously submitted to the city as outlined in item eight B.
For.
For by Councilman Muscat, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Board of Review appointments and reappointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that we, that the city, that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Ms. Robin Massey of two, seven, three, three, five, Terrell to the Board of Review, term to expire in January, two thousand and twenty four. This appointment is to replace Charles Bonza, who was appointed as the city's controller. In addition, reappoint and extend the appointments for Mr. Dennis Saboda and Mr. Jim Rulo until January, two thousand and twenty two. And appoint Mr. Ali Shirara of two, six, three, two, five, Timber Trail, term to expire in January, two thousand and twenty two, as outlined in item eight C.
Support.
Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, under report, pardon. Next, under reports from city officials, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton budget amendment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that uh Dearborn Heights City Council approved the budget amendment of four hundred and thirty four dollars and nine cents from the Treasurer's Department Mileage Account, one oh one dash two, five, three, dash eight, six, one point zero, zero, zero into Capital Outlay, one oh one, two, five, three, dash nine, eight, one point zero, zero, zero. The Treasurer's Office has damaged office chairs which need to be replaced as outlined in nine A.
Support.
For by Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion? Councilman Muscat.
Didn't they get those with the points that were bought from uh from the Express, American Express card?
Thank you, yes. Yes, um the answer is no, no, that was the express points were used for the desk that was for the staff desk in the back as well as the deputy. And then the um these, there's three chairs total, two are in the front for the um people in the front windows. And they sit in those chairs for up to eight hours at a time. And it, there were problems um physically for them as well.
I just wanted to know if they were already approved.
No, they were included in that. And the reason we had to do the budget amendment is because the um the items that we had, well, the budget item for the capital outlay was used for the receipt printers that we needed.
I thank you.
Why I had to do an amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh yes, um Councilman Abdallah.
Yes, uh I worked in the Treasury Office, there is lots of old items which need to be upgraded. And I think the image of our city should be century twenty one image. There is lots of old equipment, old the chairs, old desks. I hope the administration will work with the heads of department and with the elected officials in the city to upgrade the offices so they look as they should in the eyes of our public. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Council Chair, you're muted.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, okay, I got Councilman Abdullah and then Councilman Baydum, go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
Council Chair, uh Councilman Abdallah just mentioned it, but I just want to say I personally been inside that room and for the ladies at work in there. Seriously, ladies and gentlemen, this stuff needs to be, it needs to be in better condition. It is too outdated, I mean, we cannot try to save four hundred and thirty or five hundred bucks and and not have them sit comfortably. This has to be done, so I'm in full support of it, thank you.
I have Councilman Baydum.
Madam Chair, I, I just also want to just put it for the record, I reached out to uh Treasurer Hicks Clayton and, you know, I asked her about the, you know, three different chairs and she explained to me. Uh funny, she said, Mo, I'm going with the cheaper chair. Um and I'm gonna give the more expensive chair to the employees that are working there, so I wanted to thank her for that and just kind of shed a little bit of light on who Lisa is on that. That's awesome. And I, you know, I used to work uh long hours in some chairs and you really need comfortable chairs, so. I thank Lisa on that and I'm glad that the city doesn't have the seats from the sixties anymore. And we got some new twenty twenty one chairs.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton Investment of Funds Report for December thirty first, twenty twenty.
Pam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council will receive note and file the quarterly investment of funds report for December thirty first, two thousand and twenty, is outlined in item nine B.
Support.
For by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I'd like to ask our treasurer a question and I, I spoke, I called her and spoke with her on this, but I, I, I feel that everybody should have at least a general idea as far as what I called her on is said, uh, you know, we've got these investment reports that come up. We have different investments that we have in the city. But I'd like to know, what is the strategy of us as a city? What is the strategy of uh for yourself as a treasurer? What are you looking to get? What type of investments are you looking for? Are you looking to take on a lot of risk, very little risk, et cetera, et cetera? So give me a little bit of your vision and she took the time to have, she mentioned to me that she had already been working on something and then she just finalized it and sent it to me. It was some pretty good stuff and I think we owe her at least an opportunity, at least a couple of minutes, if you don't mind, Council Chair, at least for her idea of the direction that our treasurer is going in and what her vision is for the investment. Thank you.
Treasurer Hicks Clayton, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilman Abdullah as well, for reaching out to me on a really important subject. So I'm gonna be very brief and I have been, it's hard for me to be brief, but I'm gonna try. Um but I've been working on this for a little over a month now and I am very fortunate to be uh our city is part of the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association. So I've been working with other treasurers and have had the opportunity to work on the investment strategies. And I did email this and it is in a rough draft form because I still need to have now our uh attorney, Gary Miyaki, review everything. But you, when you take a look at it, you're gonna see first and foremost, the most important thing your treasurer does for you is safeguard your public funds. That is number one. So with that, when you look at the document I sent you, the investment strategies, the multi-page document, all of our investments have to be about safeguarding public funds and must meet the requirements of Public Act twenty of nineteen forty three as amended. This is for all Michigan municipal treasurers. And there's a couple pieces to that. We talked about the objective is again to safeguard, safety is number one. So when you're investing money, you have to make sure it's a safe investment. And when you look at Public Act twenty of nineteen forty three, those guidelines are specified. And so I sent you that Public Act as well. And if residents are interested, they can look that up online. Again, that's Public Act twenty of nineteen forty three. So when we invest, we have an investment policy, which I also sent to you. That was um originated from what I can see in nineteen ninety eight. So I think it might not be a bad idea to review that. It needs to be reviewed annually. But if there needs to be any amendments or changes, the council would need to approve that. So again, safety is the main principle and foremost objective with your investments. Um also, you need to diversify, so we don't put all your eggs in one basket. So when, and you're gonna start getting reports from me, you're gonna get an annual report that's gonna show you the portfolio and what it actually looks like, what percentage went where into CDs or with Morgan Stanley Investments. By the way, we work with Morgan Stanley as our investor. Um I compare those rates on a daily basis to find out what the best need is. But how, how do you determine how long you're gonna invest something for? And that's when where liquidity is really important. We have to be able to get to that money when we need it. So I do look at the cash flow reports, um which I do monthly, I have monthly cash flow reports. I look at the debt schedule that we have for debt payments, you know, do, when do we have a bond payment coming up? When do we have something for a fire station or this, you know, the fire truck? You have to look at all of that to see when exactly are you gonna need your money and look at your budgetary and economic cycles. So again, as we closer towards the end of the fiscal year, um towards the month of June, and I have taken account payroll, things of that nature. Payroll, seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand every pay period. So I take a look at that too. So I actually create a calendar I have that actually has everything outlined when those payments are going out. And when we anticipate it, it's part of our cash flow report. So I try to be very mindful of that, make sure we have money when we need it, make sure it's a safe investment, it meets Public Act twenty of nineteen forty three as amended guidelines and standards. And then, of course, when you go into the back part of the document I provided you, um it includes ethics and conflict of interest as well as what authorized investments are, safekeeping and custody. And you'll see some of the reporting that I'm building in that will be new for the city council and the mayor. So we've added some new, new legs or new reports to it for you, so that.
All right, so quick answer to this treasurer, what direction are you taking or not taking, it's any different from the previous treasurer? Or are we staying on the same course?
It's pretty much a steady course. I mean, we, like, working with Morgan Stanley, it's really important to know, as I mentioned, when I have something come mature, I shop it. I have Morgan Stanley shop it. I look at Flagstar, I look at Comerica, I look at NSU Credit Union, I look at all of those and say, what is the best rate? But not only that, but I have to look at the duration of the next mature date. And again, that's that liquidity, right? Is the money gonna be, can I stretch it for ninety days? Because I'm not gonna cut it close, right? If we need money in the water fund or the library, I'm not gonna extend it past the date that we're gonna need that money. And the department heads will tell you, by the way, I don't know if they'll, they want, they probably don't want to chime in, but they'll tell you, I call them and I talk to them about every investment at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Councilman Abdallah. Thank you. Okay, next we have Councilman Abdellahak.
Yes, I did the work in the treasurer department for four months and a half. And exactly what uh Lisa is saying is correct. Our first and most important job is to make sure that the principal we invest is safe. So we put them in very high rated either papers or CDs or some accounts. Unfortunately, the interest rate at this time does not exceed zero point two five of one percent, which is really nothing. But that is, you know, the main job of the treasurer. And I thank uh Jean Riley, who set the ground for everything going on right now. And Lisa is following and 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 steps. So I think the people in the city should feel safe that the money is safe and everything is in good hands.
Baydun.
Thank you, treasurer. And vote.
Okay, at this time, let's take a vote on this. Although this is for Treasurer Hicks Clayton Investment of Funds Report for December thirty first, twenty twenty.
Who supported that? Did I support that?
Yes, you did, Ray.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Assessor's Office Kimberly Comer, twenty twenty-one Poverty Exemption Policy and Guidelines.
Council Chair.
Councilman Must- Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the updated requirements for the City of Dearborn Heights twenty twenty-one Poverty Exemption Policy and Guidelines. The exemption application, the waiver of confidentiality, and also an authorization form to conduct property inspections to meet the new legislative changes in the state of Michigan. The assessing department will make these forms accessible for taxpayers as of March first, twenty twenty-one as outlined in nine C.
Support.
For my Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Sorry. So i- if you don't mind, I I spoke with our assessor Kim Conston in regards to this and I had previously served on the tax review board.
Comer.
Comer, sorry. Old age. Um, so I spoke with her in regards to some of the changes. I was at one point on the tax review board previous to being on the city council. And I'm just, I I think for the residents at these purposes, if she could give us maybe just a couple, two, three minute summary and for those of us on this call, as far as what potential changes are coming up with this, because we approve it on a year by year basis, but there are some changes that do come up. And I just want to, first of all, commend her and her department for continuing to do a great job. Uh, she's continued on with the job that, of course, her dad Tony is doing. But also just give us a little bit of an update as far as some of the changes for this particular year. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
The name, sorry.
Oh, it's okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, so there are some changes this year. Uh, there was a new legislation passed by the state and basically we have to switch how we formulate uh what people qualify for for their exemption. We are allowed to um reduce by percentages. And those percentages have been outlined in the new law. So what we have done is we have taken any um the guidelines would qualify where if uh homeowners, all of the homeowners collective income is less than the federal poverty guidelines, they would have a hundred percent reduction of taxes for the twenty twenty-one year. And then if they fell between our typical guidelines and the federal poverty guidelines, which is about fifteen percent more, they would qualify for a fifty percent reduction in taxation for the twenty twenty-one year. So that's one of the major changes. Um, I, the city used to do a hundred percent reduction, but that was changed, I would say about five, four or five years ago. So now that the state has made this decision, we are switching over to follow that new guideline in the new law. Um, there is another new aspect coming up where we would be able to extend the poverty for continuous years. But I believe that we would need to talk about that a little bit further because we would need to create an audit procedure and put that in place prior to being able to do that extension. So that's something we could work on this year is creating that audit procedure if necessary. But that isn't currently part of the new guideline. So the new guideline just encompasses that percentage, how they would be reduced and um there is a part of the form that is now directly from the state. So it's our guidelines, the state form, our questions, and then a checklist to provide that. And so that would be available online in our office, or if you'd like to call the department, we can personally mail that just right to your door if you need it.
So I'd I'd like to add to this council chair, since I still have the floor, if you don't mind. Um, just for those residents that are not familiar with this, if you are having financial issues and your income is on a lower level at this particular point, whether it's because of COVID or whatever it happens to be, at the very minimal, apply with the assessor's office for this exemption to have your taxes lowered for that one particular year if you're going through hardships. And thi- this is a service that cities provide, including our city, to those residents that um, don't have the financial situation, might not be able to pay their taxes. So we as a city would rather have ourselves work with you on lowering your taxes instead of, God forbid, having you lose your property because you couldn't afford to pay your taxes. On another fast note, I just want to know that not, no that for the all years that I've been on the council, six, seven years, or whatever it's been, uh, we had a lot of um rough spots, let's just say, at the very minimal with the assessor's office and we had a change with multiple assessors. I think it was two or three in a for a year, year and a half uh period. And I just want to again commend uh Tony Fuoco and Kimberly Comer for taking on this. We hired them as a contract. So we contract them out and they take care of the assessor's office from A to Z. And I just want to say that you guys have done a great job. Actually, as a Realtor, I get nothing but compliments about you guys. So great job and and keep up a great work. Thank you.
You, thank you. Okay, at this time, is there any further discussion?
Yes, I have just have a question for Kimberly.
Okay, Councilman Abdellahak, go ahead, please.
Uh, what kind of documentation you need from the people who apply for reduction of taxes?
So they would have to complete the form and then they would also need uh documents such as their federal and state income uh information, their ta- income tax information. They would need to provide uh like their home heating credit application with this, from the state and their um property tax returns and any uh source of income, proof of income is important as well as things like their bank accounts. They would need to provide three months of that, a copy of their driver's license. And there's actually a checklist right at the back of the application that has just every single thing that you'll need right on there. So it's all perfectly laid out right at the back for people. So they would have access to that.
Thank you.
Question? Let's vote on this and move along. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Community and Economic Development Director Hashem, request to sign contract for CDBG uh, two thousand nineteen demolition program.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign four copies of the signature page of the contract for Thomas Trucking Services for the CDBG uh PY two zero one nine demolition program is outlined in item nine D.
Support.
For my Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Salmy, Building and Maintenance Department Equipment Purchase.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move we uh concur with our Public Works Director John Salmy and approve the purchase of one uh Ford F four fifty twenty twenty-one steak truck from Gornall Ford in the amount of fifty-nine thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-six. Uh, purchase made under the MDL Purchasing Program.
Support.
As outlined in nine E.
For my Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase striker power load.
Council Chair.
Councilman uh Muscat.
I move the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of Rogue Fitness Equipment for both fire stations, the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars to be paid from capital outlay upon receipt. This is the last of the equipment to complete the firefighter's wellness, functional strength and injury prever- uh prevention programs as outlined in nine F.
Support.
For my Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I just want to tell the citizens, this stuff is really needed. Uh, our firemen really uh need this stuff. They stay in tip-top physical shape. And uh if you ever have them come to your house, which I have, these guys are great. So let's uh, let's give them all they need uh to keep uh well and fit.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under ordinances and resolutions is Council Chairwoman Melonowski Maxwell, City of You're missing nine G. No, that's what we just did, the striker power load.
No.
No, you did the fitness equipment.
Right.
Oh, sorry. You know what? Okay, I I I saw a power load and I was thinking I crossed it off.
Sounds like something broke out, that's why.
Okay, because I was thinking that was the equipment, alright. Fire Chief Brogan, permission to purchase striker power load.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of a striker power load for the rescue squad in the amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars to be paid from capital outlay upon receipt as outlined in item nine G.
Support.
For my Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
It's probably not the right time, but I'm gonna do it anyways, what the heck. I just want to commend Dana in our clerk's office. I mean, she put this stuff together here for us to make a motion. And I tell you, this is the best cheat sheets. Not that I cheated before, but this is the best cheat sheet in my life. So I just want to give kudos to her in the in the clerk's office. Good job, beautiful stuff. So thank you. What do you guys call them?
It's a guideline. It's a guideline.
I like that. That's no. O P C, thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Councilwoman.
Councilman Muscat.
Dave Abdullah kind of ruined it for us. I just wanted everybody to think that we were smart enough to say.
I know, he told us.
Good one, Ray.
Okay, next, under ordinances and resolutions, we have Council Chairwoman Melonowski Maxwell, City of Dearborn Heights Resolution.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the City of Dearborn Heights uh Council Resolution in eleven A. The resolution directs the city comptroller to prepare compensation in the amount of fifty-two forty-two uh dollars and ninety-four cents gross pay to Council Chairwoman Melonowski Maxwell for serving as Mayor Pro Tem from December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty till January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one as outlined in eleven A.
Support.
For my Councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Abdellahak.
Yes, um, I I looked at the hours. I just have a couple of questions. In one day, you have uh twelve hours and a half, which are eight hours for mayor and four and a half for city council. Did you get paid for the four and a half hours as city, the council chair or not?
Um, city council chair doesn't pay an hourly rate like the mayor pro tem did. Um, if you want, I have no problem removing the four hours if that's what you feel, but I was doing work in between up until the meeting time. Um, so it wasn't, it was between the five PM and the start time of seven PM, I think it was of the meeting. So I was still working in between as mayor duties.
I just want to know if you got paid for those hours from your position as a chair of the city council. And what I'm trying to avoid is double pay. You have couple times, couple meetings.
Yep, but it
You got paid for those hours as chair of the city council, I would appreciate it if you remove them because that would
This time, I would think about it. Um, I don't have a problem. What the issue is, is if you had put somebody else in there that was not council chair, you would be paying them as mayor for those hours to attend the meeting because they were paid on an hourly basis.
Did you attend the meeting as chair person or as a mayor pro tem?
Yes.
So you were wearing two hats and you're getting paid two, two pays?
Well, council is just a salary. It doesn't go hourly, like I said.
I understand. I should, I would appreciate it. I'm not against this, even I have lots of concerns about it and I know I'm going to get flack about it. But you done the work, you should get paid for it. But I would appreciate it if you remove those hours. That's fair enough because you got paid as a chairperson.
Okay, how many hours is it that day that I that out?
You have four and a half and three and a half, seven hours, uh, eight hours.
You know, just for because I did work as mayor up until the time of the meeting. I have no problem um pulling out the time of the meeting. We can decide that. We can put that
I'm trying to meet you halfway.
Oh, I understand. Um, the, I did work as mayor until the meeting began. Once it began, then I became council chair, mayor pro tem.
So those are the hours which you work as a chairperson. You shouldn't be paid for them.
We'll figure out how long the meeting was that day and subtract it out.
Yes, if you, if we can subtract them, I have no problem. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I I know this has been brought up that this is not a part of the charter. Uh, and again, as you know, I always like to talk about things that, let's bring them out in the open. Uh, this was a concern for some people, whether the council chair at the time should be paid for that first thirty days because our charter states that um, after the thirty days, they start to get paid uh based on the appropriated amount. At the same time, a lot of things in the charter, um, there's a lot of things that are not in the charter that we follow as a city. We have the right to do that basically. And in fact, I, you know, and I thought about this a lot and and spoke with different people and and heard their concerns. But in my opinion, based on the fact that you did work during those first thirty days, despite the fact that it's not a part of the charter, it does give us the legal okay to be able to compensate somebody and I feel that you should be compensated based on the fact that you did put in the time. Um, I was surprised how much they get paid per hour, but hey. I mean
You want to change jobs?
Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe I'm the wrong business.
That I got from the H R department. I had no clue either.
No, no, I I understand. So in my opinion, I think we should, uh, you know, I agree with uh Councilman Abdellahak. I think it should, there should be an adjustment for the parts where you were in as a, at the council meetings. Because even though you're not compensated for that hourly, you are paid for that time to be there as a salary. So therefore, you shouldn't also be paid hourly. And I know you didn't mean it in a maligning way. I I know that.
No, no, I was just
No, I I get it. I get it. So I think I I would like to ask the maker of the motion to make an adjustment to not include the hours of the city council and personally, I'd be okay in approving that. Thank you.
Muscat.
Uh, I agree with uh Councilman Abdellah. Re- re- you know, I know what the 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 charter says and I know I'm gonna get phone calls tomorrow or at the end of this meeting, you can get my hands and head slapped, but you did put the time in. Uh, you stepped up to the plate and you ran a city smoothly and um I don't see any problem with uh being compensated for it because God knows what city council pay uh, city council pay is. If you, if you divide that in, in the three hundred and sixty-five days, uh, sometimes we make about forty cents an hour. And uh, I truly believe that. I'm not, and I'm not joking about that. I I think all the council people here will agree to that. Um, because it's not easy. And uh, and if uh, you know, you just I I think we should just come to a conclusion. You take some hours off and 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 become five thousand dollars even. Uh, that, that should cover taking those hours off. If we can settle this right here, right now. If somebody would make that motion or the person that made the motion.
Yeah, I amend the motion to uh, as indicated for the uh, subtract the hours with the city council, though, as long as everyone uh is aware of the fact that the council people are uh subtract the hours with the city council, though as long as everyone uh is aware of the fact that the council people are paid an annual salary, uh, myself, it's a, you know, ten thousand a year. And that includes whether you go to every council meeting or you miss every council meeting. It's, it's just the annual salary. It's, it's divided out. But, but uh, if you want to uh take those hours out, I'm fine with that amendment.
Madam, madam chair.
Even five thousand dollars?
That's my, my suggestion.
That sounds good, yes.
Madam Chair.
Um, councilman Abdullah Hawk.
Uh, I did read the charter and I did, and I do agree with Dave Abdullah that we, we need to bring this out to the open. But there is a precedence that the public should know that when Mayor Canfield left office, Liz Azius did receive salary of a mayor pro tem. And that's the reason I am voting yes for this.
Yes.
Yeah, before I submitted this resolution, I did a lot of research into past procedures, even though they may not agree with the charter. We know the charter's old and not outdated. A lot of things are obsolete in it. This is the reason why, you know, last year I had a study session about the charter review committee back in February because I know we need to redo this. Um, and like I said, this payment does not affect our budget because the mayor, when he passed away, he was no longer receiving a paycheck from December thirtieth to January twenty sixth. Um, so the money's there in the budget. Actually, the mayor would have got paid more. The mayor um on a whole, on a biweekly ma- basis makes three thousand four hundred fifty six dollars and eighty eight cents. So, you know, I've got almost a whole month in here and it's, it's less. So the city has saved money.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Thank you, and, and I, I uh concur with uh councilman uh Muscat with that as well. I think five thousand is even. You did the work. Uh, you know, we're following the precedent here as, you know, councilman Abdul Hack said. Uh, thank you for all that you did in those times uh and, and, you know, moving our city forward and, and I think we just need to put, you know, vote on this and, and we just.
Yeah, I, I agree. At this point, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to take a vote on it. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That you guys are the best. Um, next, I have resolution authorizing twenty twenty one capital improvement bonds limited.
Yes, can we note, can we note that you um abstained from that vote since you have uh obligation?
Okay, I didn't vote on that.
Okay, well, we didn't hear you. Thank you. That's fine.
No, I didn't. You didn't hear me because I didn't. I didn't say anything.
Good idea, clerk. Thank you.
Yeah, do please make sure the records reflect that.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have resolution authorizing twenty twenty one capital improvement bonds, limited tax general obligation drafted by Patrick McGow and Miller Canfield.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the resolution authorizing the twenty twenty one capital improvement bonds, limited tax general obligation bonds. The resolution authorizes the issuance of the bonds in an amount to not exceed twenty five million, seven hundred thousand to acquire, construct, furnish and equip various capital improvements, including sewer system improvements and combined sewer overflow facilities and improvements, water supply system improvements, including water main replacement and water meter replacements, together with all the related site improvements, appurtenances and attachments as outlined in eleven B.
Support.
For by councilman Baydun, is there any discussion?
Council chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I don't want to slow this process down of this uh very important um bond because of the low interest rates. But there's money out there and, and I know there's money out there, some, you know, with all of the money that the state is getting from the federal government in this COVID crisis. We should be looking into getting some of this money to pay for some of this. And uh, uh, I, I, you know, un- unfortunately, and, and it's my fault that I don't know how to do it, but we gotta find someone uh that knows how to do these things, okay? And uh, unfortunately, the resolution that myself, councilman Wenzel, councilman Zohair put in was going to address that issue. Um, but we can, you know, that's, you see, you promised it'll go on in two weeks. But I just want to make that clear. I think there's money available from the state and from the federal government to help us with this. I definitely don't want to stop this because we've kicked the can down the road for ten years on this. Okay, and we gotta get it done, but that's just my statement on this. That's all.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I know that uh John Sellme is aware of, you know, what, what availability there is for uh loans and grants and also uh Congresswoman Debbie Dingell's office uh can be helpful if there's any money available, but sewer system, construction, repair, uh water supply uh uh improvements. Those are big expenses for all the cities and typically uh there's not a lot of grant money available. There also may be some uh uh financing available or grant money available from the Great Lakes Water Authority that when they regionalize the uh Detroit Water and Sewer System. So we'll check into all that.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this?
Yes, madam chair.
Councilman Abdullah Hawk.
Okay. We have spent over a hundred thousand dollars just for basically um audit, forensic audit. A forensic audit included the C S O money. And until now, we haven't done anything except wasted over a hundred and fifty thousand, if I am close to that number in a year and a half, and we done nothing and the public don't even know why we spent the money and what is the financial situation of our city? Is there, I, I, I'm going to say there is no money missing. So everybody to understand where I'm coming from. There is money, I believe it was misused. It was restricted money and it was used without authorization from city council for something else. And it is fair to the public, fair to the, to the mayor, the new administration to have at least the forensic audit done on the C S O, on the peg and on the health act three forty five to see where the money is. Before we approve the twenty five million dollars, we need to know where is the city standing financially. And I ask not to approve this until, you know, the mayor should open the door for the forensic auditors to start on it since he was the champion and you were the champion of forensic audit. I think we owe it to the public, we owe it to ourselves to know before we put twenty five million on the, on the head of the taxpayers to know where we standing financially and how much money really we have in the C S O. Is it four million or six point eight as the plant Moran said? And I did submit papers to show year by year and the final number was six point eight million, not three point eight. There is a three million dollars which is spent and I don't know as a taxpayer or as councilman where that money is. So I ask you not to vote on it until we have uh an answer from the auditors. Thank you.
Oh, I have um Director Sellme and Mayor Bazey. I'm not sure who would be speaking in regards to this. I think Director Sam Sellme was um speaking in regards to the actual resolution and that's what we should be addressing right now.
Sure, if I, if I may. Um, so, and I'll do respect to the new councilman. We have Pat McGow on the line from Miller Canfield and Martin from Plant Moran. The, the monies for, as far as the C S O is concerned, the excess funds go towards the first payment, the first bond payment of this bond sale. This bond sale is only related to the water and sewer fund. It has nothing to do with general fund, pig funds or any of those other funds. So um, we'd like some more detail into that. They're on the call. Um, I'm sure they could enlighten you some more on that, but that was one of the reasons. The first payment in this bond is the four million dollar payment of the excess funds collected, I guess is the term, from uh water and sewer bills. So just so we're have a point of clarification on that, but I would gladly turn it over to Martin. He's on and Pat McGow, they, they're, they're more of the experts on this, so.
Okay, also, before we go on to Martin, I'm gonna ask the mayor if he wanted to chime in because he is actually next.
Um, so I was actually gonna, thank you, council chair. I was gonna mention exactly what uh Mr. Sellme mentioned, uh also what Mr. Uh, the, I'm sorry, councilman Abdul Ha mentioned about the forensic audit. Yeah, I was always for it. And in fact, we, we are still gonna proceed forward, but now the council has to make the determination, but I'm still for it. And that's one of the things that I've done is talk to Mr. Miyaki regarding that, so we can move forward with that. So whatever the council wants, you know, we're gonna proceed and I do agree that we go and we check to see, make sure that uh the council is happy with uh whatever resolutions we had in the past, you know, especially with this financial forensic audit. You know, I'm still for it, obviously.
Thank you.
Um, did um Mr. Olnek or Mr. McGow want to chime in at this time?
Uh, the one comment I would have, and thank you for having me this evening, is uh at the end of June of twenty twenty, uh, there was uh three million eight sixty eight, uh eight hundred sixty thousand uh remaining for the C S O. Uh, so uh as uh it was mentioned earlier, that is gonna be utilized plus any interest earnings uh for the first uh payment on the bonds uh for the issuance. Uh, they cannot be issued. You cannot spend that money for the project cost. It has to be paid for the uh debt and principal or uh for the principal and the interest on the bonds.
Madam Chair.
Abdullah Hawk.
Uh, Martin, good evening.
Good evening.
Is that all the money we have, three point eight or six point eight? From the numbers from your report, I went through them year by year from two thousand and three up to two thousand nineteen. There was six point eight million dollars overcharged. You say we have only three point eight. What happened to three million dollars difference?
There was uh money utilized during the years for principal and interest payments. And uh, the three point eight million is remaining after uh the C S O bond payments have been made uh through June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Uh, there was a schedule that was provided by Plant Moran that ties to the financial statements for the forensic audit. Um, and it should show the three point eight million dollars uh for the um C S O.
Okay, would you please be kind to provide me and the city council was a copy of that?
Yes, I can forward the email from before.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Man, chair.
Councilman, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I have you down. Councilman Abdullah, then Councilman Muscat. Sorry.
So I'm not sure who wants to answer this, uh, but I tell you, a lot of residents typically think, think when they see things like this, like uh for your average resident, how much is that gonna cost them in potential additional payments per month or, or taxly, tax payments? And when would that go into effect? That's what most residents really care about. I mean, of course, he wants to do what we do. That's fine. We're talking about all these technical things. It's great and beautiful. But your average resident wants to know how much is he or she gonna pay extra per year roughly and when would that start? If any. So can somebody answer that for the residents, please?
I can probably do it in a couple of minutes. I just have to uh put that in the calculation.
Sure.
You know, while he's doing that, if I may answer the first question, then be a lead into this one, which is uh when we've been talking about this project, there are these two sources of funding that are gonna pay that back. Um, as has been discussed here, there was a C S O millage that the city, city levied for a number of years, which was approved by the voters specifically to pay debt service on bonds for C S O projects. That's the money that we were talking about that as of the end of the last fiscal year, there was about three point eight million dollars remaining in that account. It has been several years since the city levied that millage, but that money can only be used to pay debt service on bonds for C S O projects. It can't pay for it directly. So when this bond issue was structured, it was set up so that the first payment will essentially come from that C S O money. And then the remaining payments are expected to be paid from the rates and charges that go on the water and sewer bills. Uh, to answer the, the prior question, if it turns out that there is more money from that millage that a forensic audit or the city later determines, that could still be used and can only be used to pay debt service on the bond. So it would still go towards paying down C S O debt. So essentially, that's what's gonna pay back the debt service. The money that's been levied already, the city has and can only use for the C S O uh bond projects as well as then the rates and charges charged to the customers. And the city's done a lot of different studies as to that rate impact with the different bond scenarios. And with that, I think I gave Marty enough time to pull up his spreadsheet and talk a little bit about the rate impact based on the current modeling.
You're putting me under pressure. But that's okay. So looking at.
Roughly how much taxes and roughly what year it would start.
Okay, so looking at the model that the city has um provided the water and sewer budget uh that was done approximately four or five months ago. If the numbers change by not having the debt payments in there, so the um proceeds from the bonds and, you know, you don't have to worry about the bond payments. Your overall in, or bills, the minimum bill would actually instead of, so before it was projected to be uh fifty four dollars and sixty cents roughly uh for the upcoming year, it would drop by about, literally about a dollar uh per uh bill. Um, and then for the average bill, uh, it would actually go down about three dollars by not having the bonds. So the average uh household pays an extra three dollars or so um per billing cycle uh if you issue the bonds.
Three additional dollars every two month on average per household starting in the year two thousand and twenty two. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, that's, then you have to kind of compound, you know, if you have increases of five percent, so it might be three dollars and fifteen cents and so on, but we're talking about three or four dollars every two months.
And the reason I'm asking it this way, because that's what the average homeowner wants to know. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, if I was the average homeowner and I see twenty five point six million, we'd look, ah, you know, I already can't afford my taxes, my monthly payments, and then here you are adding twenty six million, million dollar debt. So that's why I want to clarify in, in terms of the average resident, how much are they paying in additional taxes? Thank you. That clarifies it perfectly.
No problem. And, and the important thing to note, so the bond uh payments, as they're projected, I believe they're about one point four million dollars a year. So if you divide that up by all the, you know, users of the system and so on, that's why it becomes such a small dollar amount, I guess, on a, every two month cycle.
Right, perfect. Thank you.
I have um Director Sellme here. Did you have something to add to that, sir?
Um, no, not this time. Martin, Martin answered it all.
Okay, great. Thanks. Next, I have councilman Abdullah, councilman, nope, councilman Muscat.
Uh, a couple of my questions were already answered by Martin uh through uh councilman Abdullah. I guess we're on the same wavelength there. Uh, but uh, you know, I, I believe that putting it on a bond and putting it on our taxes, we get to write some of that off at the end of the year instead of it going on our water bill and making the water rates go much higher. So um, I think that's a big plus if I'm correct on that. Martin, can you address that? Could Martin address that?
Is.
Yeah, I know. We know. It takes a second. There's.
So I would say historically, the answer would have been yes. Uh, with the tax cuts uh act in two thousand seventeen, I believe that was passed. Most of the standard deductions increased substantially for uh individuals and for uh, you know, uh individual filers. So instead of uh having a smaller dollar amount, the standard deduction went up to twenty four thousand uh with some change with inflationary increases. And therefore, most people actually cannot deduct much of their property taxes, to be honest, because they just use the standard deduction. They don't itemize anymore.
Okay.
Uh, so that's one thing. Two, um, your taxes are limited to ten thousand dollars in that if you itemize. Um, and what ends up happening if your state income taxes that you pay on your wages plus property taxes and everything all it up into one bucket, and if it's over ten thousand, you're just limited to ten thousand no matter what. So there's a lot of limitations that you didn't have before. So very seldom does somebody actually get the benefit from that tax deduction.
Okay, thank you.
One more question, madam chair.
I have um councilman Wenzel and councilman Conston and councilman Abdullah Hawk. I'll do you next. I mean, after them. Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, now if we authorize the uh capital improvement bonds.
Okay, now, if we authorize the capital improvement bonds, does this in any way affect the uh our ability to seek additional funding or uh uh for from the federal government or state government? Would that hinder us from uh s- seeking any of this or getting any kind of help? Once is it, once we authorize this?
Yeah, my understanding is that it would not hinder. I don't know all the, you know, just depending on the grants and things like that, but I would not see any issues with that at all.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Constan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and uh Patrick and Martin. Uh, it's number one, it's possible that over the years, this uh we're doing these improvements and so forth. There might be additional cost savings, uh, uh, new ways of doing construction that'll uh make the money, uh, uh, the 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 costs be spread out, number one. And then number two, um, and John Sell me maybe the one to answer this. With the new water meters, we may see some savings, correct? Because the um uh, the water meters were more properly capture everybody's uh water usage.
Uh, as far as the water meter goes, I I wouldn't know if it would be a savings, but we would be more accurate. Uh, and we would try to be reducing our water loss, which, you know, ultimately has a effect on the budget, you know, when you start talking ten, fifteen, eighteen percent water loss. This is just another component of tightening up the system is the metering system, the water mains and and those things there, so.
It's it's real time too, isn't it? So if we see someone's u- using twenty thousand dollars of water a month or two months, i- i- it'll it'll pop up more quick quickly, correct?
Uh, yeah, yes, depending on the type of system, the city ultimately decides to go with if they should approve to sell the bonds, that that technology is available, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Abdellah.
Patrick McGowan raised his hand.
For John or Martin, is this project going to help the south end with the flood?
So this, I, as far as the flooding of the Ekor's Creek, this this does not do anything with that. What this does is we're separating sanitary sewer and stormwater so that when we have an event, we have what we call the combined system. When the sanitary sewer can't handle that flow, it ultimately dumps out or into the river. Uh, mainly the the Rouge River and uh basically north of Michigan Avenue. So short answer, no on the Ekor's Creek, but yes, um sanitary overflow is into the river.
Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion before we vote on this?
I think Patrick had a comment.
Patrick, go ahead, please.
Uh, yes, Councilman Constan and uh Councilman Wenzel had questions. Uh, first, just to echo what what Martin said, that if there were available grant funds that the city had or if uh as Councilman Constan said, that there were some efficiencies in the construction or cost savings, those could certainly be taken advantage of. Uh, and what that would mean would be that uh, you know, although this project is being sized based on uh the three CSO projects in the water main, that money would be available for other water or sewer related uh projects or to the extent where the other projects came in high. So the city has flexibility with the bond money for these various projects, not just necessarily in the line item that we currently have them at. So it's written to give you, and it can only be used for these water and sewer type projects.
Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes. Okay, Councilman, okay, let's do a roll call vote. Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Constan.
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
Yes.
Councilman Baydun.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes.
Councilman Abdo Hawk.
No.
Melanowski Maxwell, yes, it does pass. Next item on the agenda is business license renewal for Boneyard located at seven one, I'm sorry, seven zero one zero North Telegraph and also for Quartz Collision located at two seven one zero zero Van Born and Van Born Tavern and Grill located at two two four two six Van Born.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constan.
I move that to Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business licenses for the Boneyard on Telegraph, Court East Collision on Van Born and the Van Born Tavern and Grill also on Van Born as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Councilman Constan, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Bobby, he can't help. He can't, Council Chair. Point of order. Somebody else support.
Support.
Yeah, you can't, you can't say the motion and support the same person.
Okay, do I get a, who's supporting it?
I'll support it.
Councilman Muscat supports. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So uh just just listening to this, to the names of the businesses right here, i- it just reminded me that we should remind our residents to as much as possible, and I go out of my way to do this anytime I gotta eat or anytime I can do any type of service to go out of our way to give our small businesses in Dearborn Heights business. Uh, I mean, I'm looking at the names here, you know, the Boneyard, I've been going there for, I don't know, forty, fifty, whatever it is, years. Cordy's Collision is a great collision shop and Van Born Tavern, I'm sure is also a great uh place on Van Born. Uh, let's all the residents go out of our way as much as we can to give the businesses to these local businesses. And for those don't don't feel comfortable, for example, at restaurants, you know, sometimes in my business century twenty-one, you know, we pick up from one of these restaurants, carry out order and bring it and 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 eat, uh, not inside, obviously, if you're not comfortable. But let's go out of our way and try to give some of these businesses so we can allow them to continue to survive and allow them to continue to have our city thrive with these beautiful and 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 great businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members. Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you, Council Chair. Uh, first of all, I'd like to acknowledge February is being uh Black History Month. And uh I've had the pleasure of experiencing the Black History Month, the exhibition at the Henry Ford Museum. Very interesting, uh, all the accomplishments that uh Black Americans have made throughout the years. I encourage everyone to go see this um exhibition. And also, I would like to uh uh, acknowledge the um, the the uh if some of the employees in Dearborn Heights have recently left, uh, I want to thank them for the years of service, Dearborn Heights, and um wish them the best in their new endeavors, which brings me to our new uh building director that we have, uh Rick Watlin. Uh, Rick Watlin has been employed by the by the city of Dearborn Heights and Building Department for twenty-seven years. And he's recently been the uh the pu- put into the position of the building director. And he recently held the position of uh electrical inspector. And by taking the director's job, uh, Rick took a six thousand dollar pay cut from his uh electrical inspector position. And um Rick was planning on retiring in a couple of years. He wasn't really happy with things that were going on in his his uh, his time came up where he was eligible for retirement. But um, he is uh, he's willing to stay on and uh in this position of director and also do the job of electrical inspector, both jobs, which uh we would would not have to hire an additional electrical inspector. And he has, he assured us that um that he can actually de- definitely fulfill both positions. Now, um sorry Clerk's Office, but um I'd like to make a motion, please.
That's appropriate at this time, Council.
Yes, it's, it is. You can make a motion.
And Clerk, would you like to rule in on that or weigh in on that?
Well, I can only tell you that it has been done before.
Okay, then go ahead.
It has been done before, so.
Well, I want to make a motion to not only restore Rick Watlin's pay, which he was getting of a sixty-one thousand, he took a s- a pay cut to fifty-five thousand, restore him to his sixty-one thousand and also an additional four thousand dollar raise, which would get him up to sixty-five thousand. This, this, this um would save the city fif- fifty thousand dollars at least a year. So it's like a no-brainer. Um, and.
I'll support that motion.
Yeah.
Let him finish making the motion.
That's ba- that's that's basically the motion. That's that's it. Thank you.
I'll support that motion.
Councilman Muscat, is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Uh, you know, and and with all respect to our new director and the building department, I I I just, my question is to Councilman Wenzel as to how is this going to be saving uh the city fifty thousand dollars over the year? I I'm I'm so sorry. I don't know if I.
Well, we would, by him staying on and 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 doing both jobs as building director, which pays fifty-five thousand and inspector, which pays sixty-one thousand, which is over a hundred and ten thousand dollars, will just be paying one salary of of sixty-five thousand.
Are we not going to hire a new inspector?
No, no.
Okay, um, we have Corporate Council Miyaki. He wants to weigh in on this. Go ahead, please.
Uh, my recommendation would be to ask the Human Resources Director whether or not this is going to be a problem in terms of him doing uh bargaining unit work uh from his former unit or bargaining unit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Rick's um job was a union job, and he's also doing a non-union and union job. That could cause a problem.
Do we have Elizabeth Sova Perry chime in?
Councilman Constan.
Uh, briefly, Madam Chair, um, yeah, maybe we can take Councilman Wenzel's uh suggestion as a suggestion and and uh the mayor, uh Mayor Bazey and um Human Resources and the uh Corporation Council can uh get get the details ironed out. Um, and and uh uh, you know, the um, uh, I know Rick, he's a Southender. Uh, he does a good job, but um it it's it's a suggestion and uh uh possibly the mayor's office can move forward with it.
Eric, did you want to comment on that?
Um, yeah, I know in the past, uh, probably need the Director Elizabeth to actually or answer that question that Mr. Miyaki presented. But I know in the past, uh, previous directors have done inspections. Uh, they weren't just directors. They were also doing inspections, uh, various inspections. It not just electrical or plumbing, you know, pretty much uh uh any inspection that came forward and they needed help. I know that in the past years, uh, directors stepped up and they uh they helped the inspectors. This, I think, uh, Director Elizabeth, if she can uh chime chime in and uh but uh answer what Mr. Miyaki, uh, I guess answers concern.
Sure, so we.
She's on mute. Go ahead, please.
Sure, so we will have to address this with his union. Um, Mr. Watlin's also served as the um president of his union, so it's a little different. It's not a huge union. It's only three members currently, three full-time um inspectors that we have. And um they do have an open contract, um, so we will have to sit down with them and discuss to make sure everything is all right before we get any grievances that we don't want. Um, and we can go from there.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
A- and I just want to kind of just, I I just want to be very clear. Uh, it's a no-brainer that if he's gonna do both jobs and only take a five thou- five thousand, six thousand dollar pay increase, I I don't think it's a no-brainer. If we go through with that, uh, but you know, I my only thing is, two years down the line, you know, do we give him this raise, then we hire an inspector, you know, what happens there? So as you know, as Councilman Wenzel said, it's a no-brainer. If it's saving us fifty thousand dollars over over, you know, if it's saving us fifty thousand dollars a year, yeah, that's great, but if two years down the line, we're gonna rehire an inspector, we haven't raised it, which I'm okay with giving a raise, uh, we just have to understand, um, you know, how long is he gonna be doing both jobs for?
If I could just interject, we also need to make sure that this carpenters' union is okay with us taking they would take a reduction in the number of members, so they would go from three members to two members. Of course, they've been as little as one member in the past. It's been Mr. Watlin for a long time. So we ju- that is something that we would have to negotiate with them.
Okay, do you think we should hold off till next week till um our HR person can contact the union and make sure we have no difficulties? It's it, um, Councilman Muscat, go ahead. It's your turn.
Yeah, uh, you know, I I'm all in favor, and and that's why I seconded the motion. Uh, but if uh we can get some sort of guarantee from uh uh Mr. Bazey, uh, our Mayor Bazey, uh, Ms. Oba Perry and uh uh Corporation Council that we can get back within two weeks, so we know what we can do and we can get it done and over with. If if that's possible, is that possible uh between the three people? Can we get an answer from them?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a director.
Wenzel, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I I will uh remove my motion uh until our next meeting where I'll bring it up again.
Perfect.
I want to write that out so we could just put it right on the agenda so you don't, you know, be in writing.
Perfect.
He just doesn't think so. Then I have Councilman Abdullah.
Madam Chair, I I I found this to be a little problematic and 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 Rick got a great reputation in the city and uh, he does a very good job, so this is no reflection on him specifically, but I I found it problematic, to be honest with you, with uh any one of us, myself included, to bring to the table like this in this particular case and say, let's give somebody a raise. To me, something like this got to be studied, assessed, and make sure we're making the right decision, not to mention all the Ts have to be crossed and all the Is dotted, including human resources, unions, and in addition to that, in this particular case, I mean, I'd like to hear from the mayor. I mean, he's the one that appointed them. What's his direction? What's his vision? And and then if we start with something like this, you know, what's to stop me, Dave Abdallah, coming in next week and say, hey, you know, Elizabeth Spota Perry, we're gonna make her at two hundred thousand and then to me.
Like that.
Yeah, I'm sure she'd be okay with that.
I'll second that, right?
Yeah. Uh, but but to me, I I think we should do this. We're not gonna bring it to the council, then let's put it on the agenda, put the who's, the wheres, and the whys. Make sure all Ts have been crossed, all Is have been dotted, the attorneys looked it over, our attorneys looked it over, the mayor's on board, uh, our HR directors on board, and then bring it. But to me, last second like this, with due respect to Rick and to Councilman Time Wenzel, I don't think it's the right time for us to make this type of decision at the next meeting with all Ts crossed, Is dotted, let's do this, but I'm not sure if this is the right time. I think the best time, in my opinion, is during budget time. That's my personal opinion.
Absolutely.
For any, but for any director, I'm saying, my opinion, but up to you guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Baydun.
Uh, well, I I was just on the agenda item to talk about comments from, you know, from council members, so.
Right, go ahead, please.
I mean, did he remove his uh motion?
Yes, he did.
Awesome, perfect. Well, I just want to shed a little bit of light about Councilman Abdullah. Um, you know, I obviously you guys know I'm in Mexico. I'm really enjoying myself. I know Ray Muscat, Councilman Muscat's a little annoyed by that. Um, but okay, that's okay. Um.
We'll get you.
Had a little bit of light, co- Councilman Abdullah sat with me on the phone for two hours and seventeen minutes. Uh, I I I cannot thank you more enough, uh, showing his true leadership. I I mean, I I swear, he is just one of a kind. He's so good to our city, and and I'm so happy to say that I'm sitting on this council with you. Um, I mean, two hours and seventeen minutes, and not one time did he try for one second to tell me which way to vote or how to vote. It was simply, this is what you need to understand from looking at the agenda items, looking at when the actual meeting starts. I should give yourself two hours before every meeting. Believe it or not, I was in Mexico. My wife was so mad, telling me, come on, let's go to the pool, and I said, Councilman Abdullah told me, I gotta sit two hours and just review one more time. Mind you, I went through it four different times because he told me to go through it four different times. Uh, it definitely works, uh, and I thank him very, very much for that. Also, Councilman uh Muscat reached out to me. I just want to thank him a little bit on that as well, a very kind of him, you know, and you know, I love all the council. I just want to make that very clear. I don't have, there is no issue. Councilman Zoya Abdullah's the man. I love Denise Maxwell. I love all you guys. Uh, but I just want to kind of shed some light on uh Councilman Abdullah. That that was just so kind of you.
Thank you.
Also.
Hey, Mo.
About uh.
He he should have invited us to Mexico with him if he loves us that much.
You know, there wasn't enough room on the on the plane from what I was doing. I'm just joking, guys. I'm just joking.
Excuses, excuses.
Excuses, excuses.
And 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 you know, my wife told me when I put on my shirt today that she thought she felt like I was dressed like Ray Muscat, and I said, that's the look I was going for. You know, I almost unbought on the topic, but I keep that. The second thing I just want to also recognize Latanya, who's also with the commission. She's on the cultural diverse, you know, on the commission that I serve on as well. She does a great job. It's Black History Month. She, you know, they're really going above and beyond with this commission. I hope that we can always get the support from the administration and the council. And I want to thank her for all that she's doing and the entire commission. So as her chair, I want to congratulate and thank her for that as well. And then Elizabeth, who is also helping get my badge. I don't like the photo that I took, Elizabeth, to be honest with you, but it's okay. You know. I won't go any further with that. But I also want to thank Elizabeth and for everything that the HR department has done with me. It was such an easy process of getting my badge. And also Lynn in the clerk's office. I love all of them at the clerk's office as well. Thank you, guys, for making everything so easy. And to Elizabeth, Councilman Abdalak, I'm also going to thank you for reaching out to me and congratulating me, which I should have. Reached out to you first as you are older than me, but I also want to recognize you on that as well. Thank you, guys, all so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Councilman Abdul Haq.
Yes. I have spoke to the human resource director, Elizabeth Perry, and I thank her for giving me the time. About several issues. But I would like. To ask the chair to. Schedule. Study session, so we all can learn about the health care. Act the three forty four, forty five health care. And what's the meaning of self insure in the city? And how the money is spent and how it is calculated for the health care every year. There are lots of questions about. How. Things function. For the health care, and I think it will be very beneficial for all of us on the. City council and for the residents to know how this program functions. So I ask you if you can schedule study session for it.
Direct the clerk's office to note that and I will get with you tomorrow on when we will study. We will put that study session on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Councilman Conston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm glad to see we're moving forward. We got a lot of. Work done keeping the city moving forward. I'd like to wish a happy seventy fifth birthday. To District Seven Dance Club, longtime chairman Gary Barkoff. Who's seventy five today and also happy birthday to our only living. Remaining Charter Commission member. My father Clarence Constantakis, who is ninety five today. Thank you.
And happy birthday to Denise Maxwell, our council chair.
Happy birthday.
Next, I have Mayor Bazey.
Muted.
I put the request. There's a delay, sorry.
Thank you, Council Chair. First, I would like to first welcome our two new council members, Mr. Abdallah and Mr. Badun. This is the first council meeting. Once again, congratulations to both of you. I also like to acknowledge, you know, Councilman Abdullah, you know, he's serving as a new council. Chair pro temp. Congratulations, Council. Chair pro temp Abdullah on that as well. I'm also looking forward to working with our longstanding council members. And also on newly appointed members of the council to move our city forward. I have a few things I wanted to discuss today. So we had a meeting earlier. Today on the Van Board Corridor. Right now, it looks like it looks pretty good. It looks like we're gonna be moving forward. We have, we're gonna be creating a steering committee for for different, different areas. And. That's more information to come later. So supposed to be getting an email here shortly, who's gonna be on on the steering committee and which which committee, so I will share that with the council members. At another time. Also. I know with this pandemic, we. You know, once, once it's over, I know we're gonna be moving back to the council room or council chambers. And I don't think. From today on, we're gonna be. I I think that the norm is gone. I think we still have to do the social distance even after this pandemic. So what I was proposing, and I'm gonna bring it in front of the council. And we had a meeting about a week or so back, you know, with a few few people from the administration also. People from this, well, the city clerk was there also. We want to see if we can improve the room, try to make some changes. So what I want to do is I'm gonna go back and try to get a quote. And see if we can upgrade some of the cameras. I know we talked about that in the past. So I'll send it out for a quote to do a revision, so we can have the council room, you know, with the social distance. You know, we've been brainstorming. I've been brainstorming some ideas, you know, what we can do to the council room or council chambers. Make it more. I guess more COVID friendly, you know, we can be social distance even after after the pandemic or even after we can come back. And do a meeting in person. Also, I want to bring to. To everybody's attention, especially our senior citizens. There's a lot of scammers out there. And I want our seniors to be very careful. If something doesn't look right, if something doesn't sound right, you know, please call our police department or call the city hall. And ask us that question. If somebody asks you for personal information. Anything with like your social security card, bank, bank account statement, I mean, bank account numbers. Or credit card, anything like that, you know, please get ahold of the police department or us here at the city hall. Because there's been a scam with a water bill. Somebody's been reaching out to some senior citizens. And they're asking them for, they're saying that you owe this much to the city. And they're using somebody from the city hall. Somebody's name and it was one of the, one of the residents actually paid a big amount. So we want to try to prevent that, so please, please. Make sure you reach out to us if this happens, just to make sure we confirm. Also. What I wanted to do is also acknowledge, I know Councilman Wenzel mentioned this month is our Black History Month. We have something posted on Black History Month for. At our site, website and also our Facebook, so please visit that and. And there's a lot of information on that. Also, what I wanted to do is we have recognition. I want to recognize some of our. Folks from our fire department. We have Paul Nieto. We have Marco Dion, Casey Workman, Brian Lopkovich. And Justin. Human. They actually, they responded to a call for one of our disabled. It was a lady that was this recently disabled. And she was in. She's disabled in bed and so she wasn't getting oxygen. So she called the, she called the fire department. They responded. They went to her basement. They discovered that her water heater was leaking. So they decided to, she was, when they told her that it was leaking, you know, she couldn't afford it, so she started crying, so the. Those firefighters, they actually came through. They went purchase a heater and they paid for it out of their own fund. And they came at a separate time and they replaced the water heater for her, but later on, the union actually reimbursed them. So that's, that's very commendable. Also, we have some letters of appreciation. That's amazing. Thank you. And also, we have some EMT, we have letter of appreciation for Roger Chapman. And Bob Flynn. Good letter recommendation from one of the residents. Also, another letter of appreciation to firefighter Jonathan McClay. So again, thank you for your service. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. We have Lieutenant Nathaniel Dunham. And firefighter Derek Herman and firefighter Michael Metz. Also, they got a good letter of recommendation here from one of the residents. You know, thank you for your service and thanks for everything you're doing.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Director Somi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, real briefly, I would just like to thank on behalf of the Department of Public Works. Dan Brooks for his thirty plus years of service for at Wade Trim and his. Contributions to the city of Dearborn Heights. And other places I have worked with them. He's been a great mentor, a great teacher, so. Just wanted to give a personal shout out to Dan Brooks, as this will be his last meeting with Ray Trim and. Friday will be his last day of employment at Wade Trim as he. Rides off into the sunset. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have. Librarian McCaffrey.
Okay. Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just want to touch on a couple of items. First off, Carolyn Candy Library and John F. Candy Jr. Library are now doing computer by appointment. If you want to make an appointment, please call three one three seven nine one thirty eight hundred for Carolyn Candy Library. And three one three seven nine one six zero five zero for JFK Library. Please remember, we are adhering to mask use and social distancing mandates, so adherence is appreciated and enforced. On a further note, in the coming weeks, we will be incrementally opening up further services as well at the libraries as case count and circumstances allow. I'm hopeful we will resume most of our pre-COVID activities in the coming months and look forward to giving more updates. Second, the next round of craft kit boxes is available for signup. If you're interested in a craft kit box and want to sign up. Look for information on our website at dhcl. Dot Mich Library dot org. Address is right there. Finally, our home delivery service is up and going. If you're interested in having a library items delivered, give us a call, three one three seven nine one thirty eight hundred. To request items or go to our library catalog at dhcl.michlibrary.org and place a hold. And give us a call when you get notice. It is in. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library soon.
You. Next, I have Treasurer Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to remind everyone that Monday, February fifteenth. Is the deadline for your twenty twenty winter taxes. That's when, after that, it's late. So we are open on Monday. And our hours for the city hall would be nine AM to noon and one to four PM. It is walk in. We allow five people in the building at a time. Their masks are required as well as social distancing. There is a screening when you come in, the CDC guideline questionnaire, and we check your temperature. So there's one way of paying your taxes. In other ways, we do have a twenty four seven drop box and the night deposit box on the wall. And you can pay online with an e-check, which is a fee of three dollars, or your credit card or debit card, which is three percent administration fee. And I want to remind people about Dearborn Federal Savings Bank. With two locations in Dearborn Heights, and they also can take your payments. What I wanted to share with you, if I may, real quick, because I want to say thank you to our residents, by the way, and our taxpayers. Because this year, I like to look at numbers and I like to do metrics. And even with pandemic, what we're dealing with and going through and the adjustments everyone's making. I want you to know that when we look at the number of tax payments made from last year to this year, you are up by over thirteen hundred. So again, thank you for going above and beyond and adjusting during a very difficult time for everyone. We and Treasurer's Office do appreciate you. Thank you.
Next, we have Latanya Gator.
I've lost you.
No, I'm here. Sorry, I was just unmuting myself. Latanya Gator here. Hello, everybody. Just wanted to. Say thank you on behalf of the Dearborn Heights Community Cultural Relations Commission. Thank you, Councilman Tom Hensel, for mentioning that we're celebrating Black History Month. The council. John Zadikian. Mayor Bazey. The entire council members and former, former council members have been very instrumental in helping the commission celebrate Black History Month. And quite honestly, keeping the commission thriving since Mayor Puleko's passing, that's something we were. Very concerned about, and so we're happy that we still have the support of the city leadership and Dearborn Heights residents. Definitely want to say happy birthday to Gary Barkoff. We hope that you enjoyed your card. We hope that you can enjoy your birthday pandemic style. And we hope to keep the support of the city. We have our meetings currently on every first Thursday of the month at seven PM. Of course, it's open to the public. We are still formulating some things as we currently have some open positions. But please rest assured that the commission will be up and running as soon as possible as we have current interviewee scheduled. If anybody has any questions about the commission's work, feel free to contact me at gatorlatanya@yahoo.com. Feel free to also contact Vice Chair Councilman Mo Badun or Secretary Leslie Windless. My phone number is also available to contact at three one three two six five nine six three five. Thank you.
Public, I'm sorry, any further community comments? At this time, I'm going to ask our clerk to read the disclaimer. Okay. The procedure for addressing the council during the comment section of public comment shall be as follows. Any member of the public who wants to address the council shall begin doing so by stating his or her name. The street he or she lives on and the municipality in which he or she resides. He shall have, he or she shall have up to three minutes to address the council. Now, let's move forward and open it to public comments.
You will have a three minute limit.
Oh, there you go. We couldn't hear you first.
Oh, okay. Latanya Gator. Go ahead, please.
Sorry, I accidentally raised my hand, but I forgot to mention I am a Dearborn Heights resident, five three oh two Madison Street. Thank you.
Okay, any further public comment before we end this meeting? Yeah, this time, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Meeting has ended. Have a good night, everyone. Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Council Chair, Council Chair. Sorry, I think I saw Michael McCaffrey with his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was waving goodbye because everyone was saying.
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry.
Go enjoy your dinner. You're an hour late for your reservations.
All right, it's all right. Don't worry about it. Thank you.